Okay, welcome. Everybody joining us at the phone? We've got a few members in the process of numbering. We can all stand and have the invocation, pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings we have received within our city, state, and country over the last few weeks. We thank you especially, Father, for the courage and wisdom of our public servants who helped our citizens during Hurricane Irene. We thank you also for the gift of being neighbors and growing from our experiences as citizens as we all were able to take advantage to prepare and recover our city. Now, we ask for your continuous guidance as we deliberate the issues of our city on behalf of those that we represent. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It's a fairly short agenda. In fact, I believe the city manager promised me we could be out of here in less than an hour tonight.
I did.
So we'll start that clock. Okay, and we'd like to start tonight with the audience for visitors. If anybody would like to speak on any subject, I think we do have one public hearing, actually two public hearings. If you're here to speak on behalf of those public hearings on the lease of publicly owned property, if you withhold comments until then or concerning the general obligation bonds, any others? Seeing none, I'll ask for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the regular session minutes of August 22, 2011, as amended.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, and the work session dated on August 22?
The mayor moved that we approve the work session minutes of August 22, 2011.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
And finally, the special session dated August 26.
The mayor moved that we approve the minutes of the special session, August 26, 2011.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. No comments. Judy?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, abstain.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
I'm going to defer to them.
I don't think that's going to make it.
Need full votes?
I'll remember, I'll remind council that even though you weren't there for the special session, that you can still vote positively in favor of the minutes.
Well, I'll change my vote to aye.
As will I.
Okay, to aye, okay. Mr. Mayor, the motion was carried by a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. And now we'll move to the public hearings, the first of which is the receipt of written bids for lease and/or purchase of publicly owned property located at Messick Point. And this is a public hearing that's been continued, and I think, Randy, if you don't mind, can we start with, I guess, the receipt of the bids and what the council is considering tonight?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, here at your last meeting, the council received, opened and received two bids for the property, the general description of which is between the bathroom area and Diggs' property on the dock pier side of Messick Point. There were two bids. The first of the two was offered by Michael Diggs. His bid was for $30,000, a straight purchase. He also indicated that he was open to a lease if we would prefer to enter into negotiations with him on that. He was open to considering it. Stated uses in his letter are continued commercial fishing, shedding the soft crabs in preparation of hard crabs. Would note that it is the adjacent business owner who currently operates a commercial fishing business. The second bid that you received was from Port Messick LLC. What they were offering was a lease/purchase arrangement. The lease aspect is $500 plus $1,100 per month for up to two years. At any time during that two-year purchase, or excuse me, lease period, they would have the option, if they satisfied a certain condition pertaining to the approval, to construct and operate a fueling facility, to purchase that property for $225,600. That would be an option that they could choose to exercise or not exercise under the agreement. Stated uses, water-related activities to include dock master operation, fuel dock, bait and tackle shop, boat slip rentals, and restaurant. Those are the universe of proffered uses. That is not to say that they would all necessarily be there. As I said, the purchase option is activated only upon the bidder's and leaseholder under that scenario's approval and permitting to operate a fuel dock. And would note that the bidder is currently the company that operates the city dock. This evening, we have a public hearing to entertain public comments from any person who wishes to comment on either of those or to suggest an alternative. Following that, assuming that you want to move forward, first option is to not move forward. If you want to move forward with either, you have two choices. One is to choose the offer that you think works best for the city and go ahead and approve this on first reading and allow us in the intervening period between first reading and second reading to finalize the agreement that would go along with the ordinance. Alternatively, if there are significant changes that you would like one or both bidders to consider, an alternative is to provide those to staff, and then we would work and bring it back, not for second reading, but for first reading as soon as it can be arranged.
Any questions of council or city manager before we open the public hearing? I think I just have one, and that is, on the purchase option, was there a period of time, was that also, that would close after two years?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure of that.
They would have up to two years to exercise that option. If they did not, then the option period and lease period would expire.
Would expire. Okay. All right, and with that explanation, I'll open the public hearing, and those who wish to speak on this issue may approach and speak. Mr. Powers?
Hi, my name's Tom Powers. I live at 311 Hunts Neck Road. I guess I'm kind of intimately involved with a boat ramp at Messick Point. About 10 years ago, I harassed council and staff enough that they went to BMRC and got the money so they could put a lot of those improvements in there. And I think I'm probably the only person in the room that went to all the meetings at BMRC so John Gill and Jeff could get that money. Quick, he passed out a plat that I got from the city last week on Friday describing this. First off, I think it's great, the concept of getting a fuel dock down there, potential restaurant, all those things are really good ideas. It'll support the commercial watermen down there, support the boaters down there. My concern is the what-ifs on the deal, especially with the restrooms and the pier, which right now goes underneath some of this property, or over top of some of this property before it gets out to open water. And my concern is, what if the company that purchased this land decides after the third flood that they go through, like Wallace's Marina over and Fox Hill did, goes out of business? And then we don't have anybody, then the public restrooms are no longer public restrooms. And that's my, really, my main concern is that the public restrooms and the head of the pier itself remain clearly in city property, or if you're going to make some kind of arrangement where if they don't maintain the restrooms, that it reverts back to the city or something like that, that it's a separate lot that's cut out so that it's very clear if these guys, which by all means, I hope they don't, do go out of business or decide to sell the business to somebody else who is not as amenable to the public use, can't just block it off in the public. I mean, we can all think of different areas in the cities that tens, twenties, fifties of years ago changed hands, or the county did something with, that at the time, I'm sure it was going to be used by the public for a long term, and it's not anymore, and you can't figure out what, nobody can figure out what's going on. I just think it should be straightened out and decided right up front and made clear that this is the way it will transition. And my personal preference would be, or suggestion would be, just cut out the restrooms in a little area at the foot of the pier and keep all of that in city property as a third lot. You have the lot where the boat ramp is, the lot that you're trying to sell now, and this other little lot that maintains in city hands. And yes, again, you could still lease out the pier to these guys for a dollar a year or whatever, and make it so that it's part of the conditions is they keep the restrooms clean, but that's the only thing I was concerned about.
Thank you, Tom. Any others? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open up consideration by council.
Let me ask a question, if I could. I recall it in the earlier phases of the lease of the existing marina, that there was some discussion about moving the restrooms to a different location?
There was.
Does that move it on to, is that part of that requirement? And is that putting them on city property that would remain city property?
I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, or if you'd like to handle this, you can answer.
You can handle it if you'd like.
But maintenance of the bathroom facilities, maintenance only, of the restroom facilities is currently covered by the lease of the pier.
Yes.
Okay? And basically, under that lease, if they're not maintained adequately, then there's provisions for the city's protection in that lease.
Right.
Okay? This particular lease is for the property of which the restrooms sit on. And under the provisions that I would expect that our staff would clarify and make sure that is there would be, that if the restroom facilities are moved in any way, that they would still remain public access facilities, and that they'd be replaced by equal or better than facilities. So Randy, you want to expand on that?
Mr. Mayor, you hit it perfectly in both aspects. With respect to the issue at hand this evening, the agreement does speak to, as proposed by Port Messick, their ability to relocate the public restrooms as long as they continue to provide public access of comparable or better throughout. Doesn't address, and correct me if anyone recalls it differently, the issue of what happens if Port Messick or a successor, an interest, were to go out of business, if they were incorporated into a building, although an exterior entrance. So that is something we could, to look to further clarify if that's the council's desire.
I think, Mr. Powers, a very good point.
I agree.
That we probably do need to keep the restrooms as public property, 24 hours a day, seven days a week access. One way to ensure that is that we own it.
You're suggesting, then, that we carve that out of the parcel?
I'm not really suggesting how you do it, because I just really don't know enough about doing it that way. But whatever you do, that the city has the restrooms.
24/7.
24/7 access.
And Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess in normal lease terminology, of which I'm sure that we would clarify this in particular, but normally, they say to its successors, the same requirements would be assigned. So even if the business was sold, or of course, if the business went out of business.
Right.
Then the lease would be canceled, and it would just revert back to city.
I think the issue, Mr. Powers, is trying to get at is, what happens once, if they execute the purchase agreement, it's no longer a lease, and they own it fee simple?
There's no risk under the lease provision, because a failure to make available to the public would terminate the lease. The risk would be, as Mr. Powers pointed out, that if the property is sold and deeded, and then there is a failure to perform, you know, by the new owner, then is there adequate protection relative to the bathroom facilities? And quite frankly, I don't remember, but I will assure you that we will address that there will be an appropriate restrictive covenant in the deed or a protection for the city in order to be able to protect that position.
Okay.
And I will get with Randy promptly and take a look at the languages there and make sure that.
Because I would hate to say that we're going to carve that piece out, and then that negates any plans that they, they've already agreed, that if they move them, they'll pay for them, they'll build something back comparable. It may be that they want to move it somewhere else, and I don't want to mess up their plans to be able to do that. So if we can, in the purchase agreement, can make it clear that if they go out of business, then.
I think we could do that.
Yeah.
It reverts back. You're talking about after the sale of the property, if that option is exercised.
And 24/7 in all those cases.
Right. And the only other thing that I would like to see us cover is, we need to somewhat address the physical location of the building, in my opinion. And that is because we've got it right now positioned to service the boat ramp and the piers. And I guess if you took full advantage of the property, I guess you could put it all the way away from what I would call most accessible use. So I'd like to see us address, you know, at a location mutually agreed to by the city and the buyer, if you know what I'm saying. I don't want to see the restroom facility be moved to the extreme corner over here and not really be convenient.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's the intent of anybody, so.
250 yards away is not, is not a good thing.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance of the city of Pecosin, Virginia granting a lease and/or purchase of publicly owned property located at Messick Point.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. As I understand this, this would be the first reading.
It is, but they also need to say who they're granting the lease to.
Correct. To Port Messick LLC. Vernal?
Yeah.
You concur with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded that the city grant a lease with the option to buy this property to Port LLC. This is the first reading, and we'll see it again next week or two weeks from now.
As soon as we've got the full purchase agreement ready to go, which I hope will be in two weeks, but we just need to clarify this language, and Wayne had a few other legal points that we need to discuss, but as it was open for consideration, we haven't.
So next time, we'll probably see the formal lease document or document.
Certainly within a month, if not quicker, and then it'll be second reading and the lease documents at the same time.
Very good.
We'll put it all in front of you.
Any other questions?
Just make sure that Wayne and Randy take good care of the citizens, which I'm sure you will.
We'll do our best.
Okay. If not, Judy, would you please call the room?
Sure. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay. Second public hearing tonight is a public hearing dealing with the refinancing of Pecosin Series 2009A general obligation bonds. That'll be a public hearing in consideration by council, and Randy, would you?
Maybe it should be asked to go ahead and ask Kyle to come up. Kyle represents our financial advisors, Davenport, and has been the person, among others, that has been working with us on this. Kyle, good to see you again.
Good to see you all. We've come bearing hopefully what's good news. Color-bound copy of what's in there. President. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Good. Well, again, Mr. Mayor and members of council, good to see everyone this evening. We were here just about a month ago to introduce an opportunity to save some dollars through refinancing. Rates right now are very favorable. And we were here a month ago, basically to get your permission to move forward. We did that, and we've gone forward with what we call a dual-track strategy, which is basically we position ourselves to be able to go through either the Virginia Resources Authority pool program, or to be able to take advantage of a bank-qualified private placement with a banking institution, like we've done many times in the past. And basically, what's happened since we were here last month is we have applied to VRA. We've also importantly bid out the refinancing to local and regional, national banks. We've gotten those bids back, reviewed them, compared them to a current market VRA financing, and tonight have for you the results of that and a recommendation that we move forward with what is basically the best bid from the banking institution. We'll talk about why that is. On page one, just a little bit of background, we've covered the majority of this. We're basically looking at a Series 2009A bond. The current interest rate on it's a 450. The final maturity is in 2029. It's callable at any time with no penalty, which is very important when we're looking at refinancings. And so those are sort of the benchmarks we're looking at with the refunding side. We also added into this financing, kind of while we were at it, in order to take advantage of economies of scale and not have to go through the process twice, we added in the roughly $600,000, which could be less, for the Public Works Building. So we have a refinancing, that's the majority of this financing, and up to $600,000 for the Public Works Building. I'll move through page two, as we've covered that, and move on to page three, which is basically the summary of the bids we got back from banking institutions. We got eight bids back, which in today's environment, you've had the good fortune of getting a bunch of bids back from your past financings, and that continued with this bidding of a financing. SunTrust Bank, just to cut sort of right to the chase, is what we're going to recommend tonight. They provided what is basically the lowest rate that is fixed through the entire maturity of the loan. That rate is at 2.98%. So you compare that to the 450 that we're at right now, and that's shaving basically 150 basis points off of the loan. In addition, their loan, their bid would basically allow you to retain total prepayment flexibility, which means you could prepay, refinance, pay off that loan at any time with no penalty. So we basically retain that flexibility that we had going into this. The very bottom, and I apologize for the small print, is basically all of our bids. SunTrust was the lowest at 298. There's one additional bid that we'll go into a little bit of detail with, just to kind of cover the basis there and explain why we're not recommending that particular bid, and that is RBC. And just as a point of reference, we talked about the ability to either go with this banking institution route or go into the VRA pool. When you compare the SunTrust bid that we got to a VRA financing, the SunTrust bid looks better interest rate-wise, and it's also more favorable from a call provision flexibility Moving on to page four, I just wanted to kind of bring this to council's attention in the event that it did catch an eye or two. RBC Bank did actually provide a rate that was lower on the surface than SunTrust, at 268 versus a 298. But the catch is, their rate is basically only good for 10 years. So we have what is roughly an 18, 19-year loan. Their rate would only be locked in for 10 years of that, and we'd still have eight years to run. It would basically be subject to fluctuating or interest rate risk, if you will, those final eight years. So what we did in order to compare SunTrust to RBC, and then to sort of do that comparison, do that math, is we ran what we call a break-even analysis, which is basically where we say, if we were to go with RBC and we take the lower rate for the first 10 years, what would the rate have to reset to after those first 10 years, such that we would be worse off for having gone with that RBC rate than for just locking in the SunTrust rate for the full term? And basically, what that rate ended up being, we did the calculation, was 3.11%, which basically means that if the rate were to reset after the first 10 years at anything above, call it a 310, we would have been better off to just go ahead and lock in the rate with SunTrust today than to go with the lower rate for the shorter time period. That 310 is a low rate when we think of kind of a break-even type of analysis. It's likely in our minds, if you look back at history, that that rate could be above a 310. So we're recommending that we just go ahead and lock in. Our rate will be fixed for the whole time period, and we'll have total prepayment flexibility with SunTrust, whereas with RBC, they have what's called a make-whole, which greatly limits our ability to either refinance or pay off over that 10-year period. So just wanted to kind of address that. As on the surface, the rate may look lower, but when you kind of do the full analysis of the turns and the conditions and the fact that the rate's not fixed for the whole time period, SunTrust to us is still our recommendation. Page five, just wanted to show you in terms of dollars, the sort of before-and-after picture of the refinancing. Basically, the 2009A bond, as it stands right now, we have about $2.8 million left outstanding. Total debt service of $4.3 million over the next 18 years. The SunTrust bid, still have effectively the same principal outstanding, slightly higher, but the interest cost comes well down. Basically, bottom line, what it results in is an average of about $25,000 a year in savings, a total of about $450,000 in total savings. That's after any cost of issuance is paid, that's all been factored in, so it's not to say that 450 gets reduced by any more. At the end of the day, it could actually be a couple of dollars higher, depending on how the final sort of logistics work out. And again, those savings are locked in, and they're known, because that rate is fixed for the whole time period. One other point, sorry, skipped over this top bullet point. We typically measure our refundings on what we call a net present value basis, where we basically take those cash flows and we call present value them back in today's dollars. If you compare that to the power amount of the bonds that were refunded, we look for that sort of metric to be at 3% or higher in order to gauge it as being a refinancing that makes sense. We're at almost 13, we're 12 and 1/2% basically. So we're four times in terms of the savings level what a minimum threshold would be with kind of industry standard practices. Moving on from the refunding side of things, talking a little bit about the new money, working with staff, we understood there was a need for the financing for the Public Works Building. Again, while you're out sort of doing the process of getting financing, it makes some sense to tie some things together and take advantage of economies of scale and time and costs and those kind of things. So we added in the new money for the Public Works Building that'd be amortized over what is roughly 15 years or is 15 years, the same interest rate. It all kind of gets lumped in together with the refinancing. So when you sort of compare, in our minds, the ability to lock in a rate that is prepayable at any time with no penalty, that is very favorable in terms of being sub 3% by a little bit, it makes a lot of sense to kind of conserve our cash, and to the extent that we sort of have excess cash moving forward, you can always pay this loan down. I think that's an important point. That's a nice flexibility that SunTrust has given us in this bid. It's prepayable at any time. So it makes some sense to lock in those cash flows, lock in a rate, knowing that we have total flexibility going forward, and we can conserve our cash today for the other critical needs coming in either this budget cycle or the next budget cycle. Page seven, simply by restating what I've said a couple of times, SunTrust bid with the lowest all in interest cost, total flexibility. SunTrust bid with the lowest all-in-interest cost, total flexibility. An important point, we're locking in the rate today. We know what that rate is. If for some reason we want to go with VRA, they don't price their bonds until it's basically early November. So although they might look good today, which they do, and it's a very solid program, we'd still have to wait until they go through their process of pricing their bonds in early November. At that point, we don't know what the rate would be. That said, our next steps is a public hearing for the, I guess, the new money portion of this. There should be an ordinance hopefully in your package that would authorize both the new money and the refunding. Ben Anderson with Sands Anderson can address that a little bit more if there's any questions on that topic. And pending your approval this evening, we've moved to close most likely by, on about Thursday, September 22nd, to give a week or so to kind of pull the documents and the numbers together. Happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, and great presentation and always good news, and appreciate your representation of the city out there on these matters. Council's question?
Yes, I did have a question. Your, the fee that we paid at Davenport is rolled into the new loan?
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that it looks to me like there's about a difference of about, can you tell me how you, we determine your fee?
Yeah, it's in our contract. We have a multi-year contract with the city. I believe it's $30,000 for financing, and then sort of hourly general work, as it's done over the course of the year, can be paid out of a financing as well. And so I think the difference you're looking at between sort of the before and after...
That's about 85.9 is what I'm getting.
Yeah, it's not only our fee, it's bond council's fee as well, or anything the bank has in terms of...
Closing costs.
Yeah, it's closing costs.
That just seems like a lot of money. That's a couple of employees. I mean, a yearly salary for a couple of city employees, I'm just surprised at how high that rate is. So that's just something I'd like to point out.
One question I had is the $600,000 for the Public Works Building. We had some bids that were substantially lower, but would we be smart to leave it at $3.6 million and use those extra funds to pay what we may not get reimbursed for this storm cleanup, rather than enter the amount of bid that is selected for the Public Works Building?
That's my opinion. First of all, if the bids ultimately do come in lower and you award a contract, hopefully your next meeting, for an all-in cost on the Public Works Building, it's less than 600, we have immediate repayment ability if we've already borrowed it, so we won't have any interest or carrying costs. With respect to the storm costs, we expect to get 85% of our costs reimbursed, a minimum of 85. It could be a little bit higher as a percentage rate. The council would need to decide with the balance whether it's appropriate to get that at general fund balance or to borrow it. In this case, you would be paying it off over an 18-year period, so you can borrow it. You can pay for the balance out of your savings, our, the city's savings, or you can finance it, assuming you could even finance it. I'm not sure you could because it's an operational cost.
I don't think I'd want to go 18 years on this storm.
Yeah.
Well, I was just thinking, as cheap as it is.
Well, yeah, it is cheap.
Let's forget the storm for a minute and think about other potential needs. Like, you know, last year I think we were unpleasant, or the year before, we were unpleasantly surprised by failure of the heat and air conditioning system at the middle school. The year before, we were looking at a new roof somewhere. When I look at the overall term and the savings of $450,000 in spite of the fees, you know, I kind of see that as a potential source of money for projects that we really have not done. You know, so I see your point, and I agree with your point about the storm damage, and I appreciate the federal and the state governments coming to the table with what I see as some reimbursement, or a lot of reimbursement. But I still think there's unfunded needs within the city, and I'm sure that of that amount, I would think that we would go after the full amount and take full advantage of it. But, yes, sir.
Gentlemen and lady, if I may, there are some rules that will restrict what you can do with the excess money, because we've only had a public hearing advertised essentially on the building. You can use a portion of any excess money for other Public Works projects, but that's going to be limited to about 10% of the new money. So other than that, you're pretty much limited to using any excess for debt retirement. But since funds, money's fungible, you could, you know, if you have other sources of funds that you would have been using to pay debt, you could use them for the Public Works projects.
So I think some homework to be done by staff, you know, to make sure of what the actual amount is, but I think it's a worthwhile conversation, and I appreciate, and I appreciate what you're telling. I think we had to do this similarly in the past. We reimburse ourselves for some other things.
And it's a relatively new rule that's causing the limitation, but the, you know, there's really no downside to going ahead with the full amount because you can use it for prepayment and, you know, gives you a little time to think about how else we might, you know, might structure this.
Great. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a public hearing tonight on this matter, and I'll open that public hearing now to see if anybody wants to speak on any particulars of this refinancing issue. I didn't think so with the savings that we're talking about here, so. With that said, is council prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance of up to $3,600,000 principal amount of general obligation refunding bond of the city of Pocahontas, Virginia, and providing for the form, details, and payment thereof.
Okay, a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, Judy, would you please call the roll?
I just want to point out that Section 21 does dismiss the second reading of this ordinance, and therefore we're adopting it tonight as an emergency measure. Okay. Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, now we're moving on to new business, and we have ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for 2011, 2012. This will be compensation for city and school employees.
This proposed ordinance does two things. First, it appropriates $146,000 to our risk management department, which is our holding fund for dissemination out to departments, to fund a compensation increase similar to that granted by the city council last year for city employees. It also provides a like amount, $146,000, as an increase to the school operating transfer. Should you grant this, then the school board will consider how best to make use of those funds at its next meeting.
Okay. Is there any questions on this? Not, we have a motion?
I just, I guess it's not much of a question, but we are appropriating this to match our employee raises. And I understand the function of the school board, and they actually, you know, get to decide what they want to use it for, but I think that we pretty much are giving it to them for employees, does that, is that correct?
I think that's the consensus of council, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we made that.
But you can't control everybody.
I know that, I understand their function.
And I think they understand that, and I do believe that they will.
I do, I believe that also.
Do exactly what we intend them to do. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfer for fiscal year 2011, 2012.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a mutual aid agreement with Hampton Roads localities for fire and rescue services.
Mayor, this comes to us at the request and suggestion of our fire chief, Robert Holloway. Council members will recall that we have mutual aid agreements with our adjoining and abutting neighbors, and we and they are there for each other in times of need. What this agreement does is it takes that spirit and expands it to Hampton Roads, noting that there may be incidents of specific impact on one side of the tunnel or the other, that we may need to assist each other and just make it easier for that to be done. Robert, would you like to address anything further?
I think this is a very good thing. It doesn't obligate us to send anything, only if we've got the capacity, we share it, as others would with us.
I agree. Is there any discussion on this? If not, or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute mutual aid agreements for fire and rescue services between the city of Pocahontas and other Hampton Roads localities.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay. And finally, under new business and ordinance making additional appropriations for 2011, 2012, as we close out the fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, this is an item, there are two items here. The first is the HVAC system unit that we have spoken about a few times this summer, and I joked about it times, because sometimes it works, and it really works, but most often it does not. It has exceeded its life expectancy, and we're asking you to consider appropriation of $38,000 from the general fund balance for that purpose. Additionally, with this ordinance, we're asking you to consider the total appropriation of $200,000 as an initial appropriation for storm cleanup. We have followed the percentage of that 200, with 75% of that coming from the federal government following the presidential declaration, and at this point, a 10% match from the, a 10% cost share from the state. We understand that there will be a needs-based formula, and they will attempt to figure out what the appropriate share is on a locality-by- locality basis, but the minimum is 10. In the end, our percentage may be a point or two higher, but in the absence of knowing that answer at this time, we've modeled it at 75, 10, and then the remaining 15 to come from the general fund balance for the storm. And we do anticipate being back to you on this. I don't believe that this will be sufficient, but we do have some bills we need to pay.
And council, have we got a motion or any comments or questions?
Just a question. As a follow-up to the recent discussion, would the replacement of that HVAC unit qualify for use of perhaps some of the excess funds that may occur with the...
We can ask that question, my, not being the attorney, ours or theirs. My thinking is because it's not in the same compound or in the same location, the answer would be no.
Has to be in the same compound.
That is my non-legal opinion of the legal issue, as I understand it. If either one of you gentlemen disagrees, please...
I'm sure there'll be many more of these kinds of...
Just a thought.
Thank you.
Yeah, a good thought. Hey, do we have a motion? Because we do have some storm bills to pay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year, fiscal year 2011, 2012.
Second. Motion made and seconded, and despite the reluctance of council to spend money, you know, on the storm, it's kind of a reality, and I appreciate the effort by Public Works to do this storm cleanup. It's been quite the effort, so unless anybody has anything else, I'll call for a vote.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, and now we're to comments of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I only have two things. First of all, I just want to express my sincere appreciation to our citizens, our churches, our businesses, our employees, our high school students, and all of those that help us as a community with Hurricane Irene. It was a community effort, and the reason that we have fared better in recent years is because it is a community effort. It starts with pre-planning at the individual home level, and each person and each resident trying their best to take care of themselves, and that sense of community just spreads outward. And so I'm very thankful for that. Also, I wanted to express my thanks to the 30 or so folks that worked with us in the United Way Day of Caring last week, including Mrs. Crawford, 12 city employees, eight persons from NASA, two Air Force, one Dominion Power, three from Farm Fish, and one person from the United Way. Together, we worked on four residences in the city, doing everything from reshingling from storm damage to cutting grass and trimming trees and removing things that needed to be removed in terms of debris. And all in all, I think it was a real success, and I thank everybody for participating, and I hope more people will participate with us next year. It is open to anyone that wants to participate.
Great, Ray. All right, thanks. Tracy?
I was going to mention the Day of Caring, too. It was a beautiful day and a great day to be outside helping your neighbors and working up a sweat, which we did. I also wanted to thank city staff especially for doing an excellent job keeping the public informed, particularly via social networks during the storm and after. I think a lot of people, I think I saw over 150 people joined Facebook during and after the storm. The, I'm sorry, they liked the official city page once they found out about it. So that's something that I would encourage anybody who does use social media to like the city's official page. We have a Twitter account, and also there's Code Red that I would encourage everybody to sign up for. All of these links can be found on the city webpage. We've mentioned this before, but I think in times such as we just had, it is very valuable that people recognize it.
Just for the comment on what the city manager said, as recently as 5:30 this afternoon, I was getting calls about what a good job the city was doing picking up stuff on the streets and stuff. I guess a truck had just gone by the person's house and gave me a call. So I just think the city did a super job on getting recovered from this hurricane.
Great.
Well, just to echo what's already been said, the appreciation for the good work that everybody did from the early notifications of the potential for the storm, and then certainly the follow-up and the cleanup thereafter, I think it speaks well for everybody that was involved with that.
Okay. Buddy?
Yeah, the same thing. I happen to see the Director of Public Works today, and they're doing a great job of cleaning up people's lawns. I had to rake with them and raking everything out of the lawns, and I just want to let the public know that if you're worried about the debris that's in the street, he plans to get the street sweeper out, but he's shorthanded and he'd have to stop cutting grass to do that. But they will follow the debris truck and get that up. And also I'd like to remind everybody of the workboat races the week before the seafood festival. They'll be October the 9th. I think we'll get started about 1:00 PM. A lot of different features this year. We have things for the kids, we have different food vendors, we have the Skiffs from Smith Island. They're going to run a drag race instead of a looped race. Should be pretty good. We're going to have races for the juniors. We've got, we've had interest from some kids that want to race. Their course will be closer to shore, and so it should be a good time. We hope a lot of people will turn out. That's Dan and Bessick.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, just to follow up, for citizens that want to learn more about the workboat races or the seafood festival, you should be receiving in your mailbox this week our new issue of The Island Tide. Congratulations to Dave and his staff, another great effort, and there's all the information that you need to know about both events.
And also thank you to our sponsors of both of those events. We do have many sponsors, including the Daily Press, who's here tonight. Bottom line is we, I would say the workboat race, the city-sponsored workboat race is going to be significantly different than the races of the past, and I encourage everybody to take a new look at it. I think it's going to be a great...
I think it's going to be a great venue, sponsored, or basically a lot of help from the yacht club in that venue. And I would echo council's comments on the storm, on Public Works, and I would like to really, to also speak directly to the staff a little bit about the storm. And let me say, you know, we, many of us, in fact, most of us, all of us on council were here during Isabel. Many of us were on council during Isabel. And I would say that the outcome of Storm Irene was significantly better, but was it better because the storm was significantly different? It was a little less water, but a little more wind. I think the real difference is the work that the staff did with the homeowners to apply and really put significant investment in the homes in the city of Pecosin. As I can tell you, had the same storm surge occurred that occurred in, or this storm surge, and we had not had those homes raised, we would have had an event similar to Isabel. So my hat is off to the homeowners that could see the vision of getting better prepared, the staff that assisted them in fulfilling that, and the benefactor of that is the entire city with a substantial decrease in damage as far as homes, significantly less rescue calls, putting our public safety employees in more danger. But my hat is off to the citizens that participated in that, and the staff that set it up, and I thank you for that. Otherwise, we'd probably be talking a different tune here tonight. So, thanks. Okay, and...
One further thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't normally say anything much, but with those comments, I think that it needs to be pointed that CNBC select Pecosin is in the 10 perfect suburbs in the country. We were ranked, I think, like fifth or sixth. I think that's a huge accomplishment for a city this small.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that out. And with all those good comments, I guess we have a closed session to talk about a potential tower in the city. Is that correct?
It is a disposition of real property matter pertaining to a tower, yes.
Okay, and can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I move we convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.23711A3 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended to discuss the disposition of real property for a public purpose, i.e. tower.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nobody running this case. All right, and Judy, would take votes.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Vernal?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay.
Sorry.